Welcome to the March 5th Planning Commission meeting. I'm Vince Banderski, Acting Chairman tonight for Dan Gellins, who's not here. So, tonight we have with us Al Mansour, our trustee, Ms. Coulter, Mr. Robertson, Mr. Hoffman, Mr. Orcher-
Mar chief.
Mar chief, sorry. Mr. Yacho, our planner, Mark Lloyd, and our legal advisor, Mr. Ladd.
Very good.
So, if you would, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item of business is approval of the agenda. Are there any revisions to tonight's agenda?
None from staff, sir.
With that, I would need a motion to approve-
Make motion to approve the agenda?
Okay, Mr. Mansour approved, Jay Hoffman seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? With that, seven ayes, zero nays, two absences. Approval of the meeting minutes for February 6th, 2020. As Secretary, I report that the meeting minutes are in order. I have no revisions. And with that, I would make a recommendation, unless somebody has a comment, make a recommendation that the meeting minutes be approved.
No move?
Mr. Yacho approved or made a motion, second? Jay Hoffman seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved, seven ayes, zero nays, and two absences. Correspondence? I'm not aware of any correspondence that we've received. With that, we'll move on. Old business. Old business is the master plan. And with that, Mr. Lloyd.
Yes, sir, thank you. The Master Plan Steering Committee had a chance to meet again tonight, and it was an interesting discussion. I didn't get to stay for the whole thing, but Mr. Laddie and Mr. Mansour were both in there, neither did Mr. Johnson. He and I were in the site plan review meeting for about half of that. But tonight's discussion evolved around the survey work that we had done. And I frankly, on a personal level, found this part to be maybe the most interesting read, and I think it's, you know, because it's, you know, opinions and ideas and thoughts that, you know, our community has, and it's good to hear that, to feedback. And so, what I wanted to do, and I know that, I think it was Mr. Banderski made a comment about, you know, trying to get more information out. The one thing I'll point out on the master plan is that, in that monthly report that I do, you'll see that there's always going to be an update in there for you. And then, as time goes on, I'll start bringing in more documents to hand out tonight. I do have a copy of the survey section for everybody. As I said, I think it's a pretty good read, so, you know, take the time to read it. Any questions you might have, please come on in, give a call, stop by, whatever you want to do. But I think you'll find that the information is interesting. You'll see where some of the responses are coming from, and maybe where some of this is heading. And so, I think it's good insight to the information that we've received. And please give us some feedback. Keep in mind that, you know, we're two chapters, excuse me, sections away from wrapping up the draft. This was a considerable part of it. And this is where we'll spend a good amount of our time at the Planning Commission level and elsewhere, you know, putting together the implementation plan and those things. This is a lot of what drives that. So, I think you'll find the information that's in there to be, you know, of interest. So, take a read and let us know what you think.
Okay. Any other comments about that? You're being well satisfied with progress being made?
I think it's going very well. We have a good group. The Steering Committee's a good group. And, you know, the folks at Beck and Raider, we've really got a good lead person over there that's helping, has some good insights. Any comments from you, Dave, attending this?
No. I found that fascinating, the survey results, and we were starting to talk about how it might begin to have some play on or shape how we look at the land use map and things like that. It'd be interesting to see how that information gets applied.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, so I would just add to that, that in terms of looking ahead, we do have the transportation plan and the future land use map, which Director Lloyd was talking about as additional chapters to go through. And those will probably happen over the next two months. But at our next meeting, we will be setting a schedule for the town hall. So, we'll be far enough along with the draft that we'll schedule a town, I think we're going to do two town halls, I think is what we heard? So, we'll get those on the calendar so we can start promoting that for our residents.
Mike? Not only will there be those two town halls, but there's also a pretty substantial public hearing that needs to be conducted as a result, too.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll move on to new business. And with new business, we have the special land use public hearing, and then the Little Caesars drive-through window, site plan review. So, I'm a little confused here, in that we normally have, it doesn't show that on the agenda, I'm sorry for that. We generally have a public hearing, general public hearing. And so, if anybody's interested in making some comment, other than what's related to the Little Caesars report, now's the time to do that. Do you have any comments?
No. Are you going to move to revise the agenda to add a public comment section?
I'm sorry, yeah. I need to do that, we passed over that.
We were going to say, I see number four here, public comment.
We did, we passed over it, it is on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda.
Number four.
Item number four.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There's no space between three and four.
So, we apologize for that. It was buried under the approval of the minutes, and my mind was focused on that, so. With that, that public comment.
There we go.
Any comments?
No, I'm good for tonight.
Okay. Good. With that, I'll close the public comments. We've talked about correspondence, we've talked about the old business. And so, now we're on to the new business, and the discussion of Little Caesars and the drive-through window. And so, would one of you like to make, give us an overview of what that's about? Please. Sit up here and please just report your name and address.
Yeah. My name is Andrew Richman, I represent GPD Group. We work for the Little Caesars organization here. My address is 1801 Watermark Drive, Columbus, Ohio, 43215. Thank you for having us here today. Again, we're the engineers working with Little Caesars on this project. The existing building at 5523 Fenton Road is a multi-unit building. There's a nail salon and a Little Caesars. What we're proposing is to renovate this entire building, revise the entire site, and make this a single unit building, so that-
Excuse me one second. Mike, would you go to that overview that just shows the building itself?
Sure.
While he's talking?
Sure, give me a, just give me one second, please.
That shows the location, we're just north of Fenton Road, or north of Hill Road on Fenton Road.
You want the site plan, is that what you're getting at?
Oh, thank you.
Sir?
Yeah, the one, yeah, that-
Like this one?
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep, yeah. So, yeah, this is our site plan. For the most part, this site will remain the same, but we are adding a drive-through, either way. So, we're going to go from a multi-unit building to a single unit building. The nail salon is currently there, is going to be gone. The interior space will be renovated to allow for us Little Caesars only. The site work that's going to be done is primarily adding a drive-through, but we're going to repave the entire site, we'll bring the landscaping up to code, we're going to include a new trash enclosure, relocate that, cut about six feet off of the south end of the building, which will allow us to increase our purveyors area, and also add the drive-through, which is a big piece of this project for us. So, in a nutshell, that's the project. And then, I can go into a little more detail about Little Caesars and kind of what we envision with parking and the drive-through, with things of that nature, if you would like.
With that, let me turn it over. Oh, I'm sorry. Questions?
Yeah, I'd like to have two questions. First, so you're expanding the actual interior of the building, or the proportion used by Little Caesars?
Correct.
Right? And so, what's changed? Is it just to accommodate the drive-through, or is there going to be some additional features inside there, or something else going on?
I believe part of what we wanted to do is just eliminate that nail salon space. We didn't feel like it added any value to the development, and it'll allow Little Caesars to bring the operational space up to the current standards. The space that Little Caesars has now is really small, so this will just give more opportunity to better serve the customer.
So, no eat-in or any of the rest of that, it's just going to, okay.
Correct.
Just carry out. And then, the last thing is, as I take a look at the traffic flow around there, it looks like there's kind of a pinch point between where the dumpster, you know, between the dumpster protection and kind of the corner of the building. And so, how does that work, especially when you're talking about emptying it, whatever the truck or whatever, you know, you know what I mean? There's going to be something to, yeah, how does that work?
Yeah, there will be adequate space for a dump truck to pull in, dump the trash, put the dumpster back, and then back out slightly and continue on his route. I mean, I see that, you know, ideally, maybe if there was more space, they could, there could be a greater radius of that, that, that striped line that we show there. But we haven't found it.
You've studied it, and it's, okay.
Yeah, yeah, and in fact, though-
If I might, there are minimum aisle widths to accommodate that and to ensure that there is adequate, and through our review, they do meet the minimum dimensional requirements.
Thank you.
And part of that trash enclosure, as it shows on here, just for everyone's information, part of that gray, not quite hatch, but dotted area, you can see the gate doors, they're a little, they're back away.
To the back.
But if you look at the other, that's a pad that the truck comes up on, so it extends out like three or four feet. Thank you, Mr. Banderski. Wish I'd have thought of bringing one of those.
The other comment I would make, Al, is what they've done is they've increased this because they've taken, what was it, six feet?
Correct.
Six feet off the south end of this building and moved it in. So, I mean, moved it in and just cut it off. So, that's open, this area, they put in landscaping here-
Yep.
-that doesn't exist. So, that provides room here to what is being mentioned, so it's not as much of a touch, a pinch point, as maybe if you drove by there today and looked at it.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the Commissions?
On the interior of the building, what is the definition or use of what is termed white space?
Yeah, so in this case, this white box space we utilize is storage, additional storage space for the Little Caesars. That, because we did eliminate one of the units that will be occupying this building, Little Caesars didn't need the entire footprint. And so, you know, in an effort to just create some efficiency and not as much energy loss, we're just whiteboxing that out. It's just going to be used as storage space in our case.
So, there's actually only one entrance for customers that are going inside ordering-
Correct. Yep.
And what they've done is, Little Caesars was here, and they shifted that over here to the north. And then, this is that one entrance, and there's parking spaces in the front here for customers to pull in, to go inside and pick up their order. And what they're adding now is this-
Window in the back.
Well, here, yeah. This is a drive-through window, so the cars will come in here, go around to the drive-through window. Mr. Hoffman?
What's to be stored?
Yeah, well, Chris. Do I need to announce my stuff?
Yes.
My name's Christopher Paris, I'm the Chief Operating Officer of Mac Pizza, we're the franchisee for Little Caesars. Do you need my address as well?
Yes, please.
It's 11761 Gene Anne, that's in Washington Township here in Michigan, 48094. The white space, the storage space, is probably going to be used for just data storage. We generate, as you know, an immense amount of information every period. That'll be a secured space where we keep those boxes. Any smallware equipment that we might have to keep on hand, parts for equipment, it'll all be in that area right there. That's just basically what the storage is going to be for. No food items or consumable items, or anything that would need health inspection or anything of that nature.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chairman. I have a concern about how people that are going inside the building, how they get to, they, everyone has to cross through the drive-through traffic in order to get from the rear parking areas to in front of, to the front door of the building there.
What this doesn't show, Mike, is there are four plus one handicap spots in front.
Yep.
So, those people that want to go inside the building will park there, you come in through this door into the operating area. And then, the spaces in the back are for employees that will come in in the back through this doorway.
How many employees are typically there on a shift?
What Mr. Banderski described here is our intent. Now, I know there won't be that many employees on a shift, but it is also our expectation that customers will park up front, and if the volume increases and there needs to be some overflow, then they would then park in the rear. For those customers that would park in the rear, in this case, there is no ideal path for them to travel back to the front door. But what we could do, if I'll walk over here, if you would like, right now, this here is all landscape. And we thought that would be a good look for the development. If you would prefer, we could create a striped section here that leads from the parking area to this place, this landscape, and instead make this concrete and give people a path up front. Granted, it's still going to require you to cross the drive-through lane, but again, there's really no other solution that we could prevent to avoid that scenario. And I personally, I wouldn't compromise that landscape look, because I think it's a good touch to the property. I wouldn't compromise that in favor of a conscious sidewalk, sidewalk.
You could still landscape the first 10 or 15 feet, though, of that space, right, and just convert the part that would turn around the building?
We could.
Because the building next door is quite close to the property line, I believe. And so, and so, traffic on southbound Fenton Road, for instance, would not be likely to see much of that landscape in any event.
I believe there's a fair amount of distance. Am I wrong?
And what side, are we talking the Arabs?
On the north side of the building.
There it is.
Yeah, so the Arabs said that we're butt right up there.
We've got quite a bit of distance between our building and the adjacent building, to where that landscape, you know, will be quite noticeable.
Okay.
Granted, I guess it isn't, it isn't ideal by any means. I would say that it's not much different than, for example, what McDonald's has in place now. There's no great route up front, but again, the intent is that to be overflow parking once we hit, you know, four or five stalls that we have up front.
Okay. What percentage of your customers use their mobile device for ordering pizzas? I assume that you have that, I don't-
You have that information, I guess I don't understand the relevance to this particular-
Well, because it would, it would relate to how many, how the time that the people would be parking in front of the building if they were ordering online or on their mobile device.
Thank you for the explanation, now I understand. For this particular location, digital orders are actually 13% at this time. We perceive that by the end of 2020, we want that number to be about 20%. That is a good mix for us, and that actually fits with what the rest of this area, including Saginaw, Bay City and Midland area, are doing as well. This is not a high-volume location for us, and 20% digital sales would be really good for it. Digital sales will increase the speed of service, and I think that's a good point, now that I understand what you're asking for. When a digital order is made, we have a system called the portal, where they walk in, they grab it right out of the portal, the customer experience lasts, on the average, about a minute or two at that point. So, if we can get that number higher, it just alleviates more of the pattern of parking problems as well.
Would those people also be able to go through the drive-through to pick up there?
They can make that, they can make that as an op, it is an option when you do digital order, whether you'd like to do it at the portal, or at the counter, or through the drive-through. Yes. The drive-through itself will only be, and as Isaac Williams explained in there, will only be for items that are hot held, and if anybody is familiar with the Little Caesars model, we have our hot and ready promise, where you can come in and be out in 30 seconds with pizza. Those are going to be the only items that are available through the drive-through. Any specialty orders or people like that will never come in, but that's a low percentage of our business.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
If I might, I would say that was a considerable part of the conversation that we were having in there, and so, we've come up with conditions to address that issue as well, the site, the storage-only thing. We have a handful of conditions that we've been talking about, I don't think we've missed any of them so far, so.
Okay.
We had a lot of conversation about that.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? With that, we'll go to the public hearing, the special land use, SLU number 20-003. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to make a comment? If not, okay.
Do you have to ask three times?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to make a comment? If not, is there anybody in the audience that would like to make a comment? Following procedures here. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing. And with that, any other comments for the, by any of the members, you mean the Planning Commission?
Yeah, so, so at this point, we close the public hearing, and we go on to the, we're preparing to make a motion to accept this, right? And so, I think that there are some, you know, there are some conditions here that are not fully met yet.
I can read them.
Okay.
You would like me to now?
Cover the mainlands, cover the mainlands we haven't talked about.
I can read the conditions that we're thinking, and we can do this at the staff level, but I'd like the Commission to direct this, and that would be for us to perform a six-month review and report back. This is a new way to go with regards to how we're parking, and I think it's important for the township to give consideration, to be flexible like we are, and to look at alternative approaches to accommodating business. But I don't think we do it blindly, and I do believe it would be a good idea, and it would be prudent for us to bring this back and just let you guys know about the decision that we made, and how it's working, and whether or not we have problems or issues, which I don't expect, but I think it's a good idea. And so, that would be one of the conditions. Casters on the gate rollers, if you will, storage only in that white room, can't be occupied for any other use that would require parking. For that menu that they have out there, that's their hot and ready menu, only no, they can't have any special orders, nobody can come up and say, I want a, you know, pizza number seven if it's not on the list, you know, it just has to be there and they have to be ready. And then, let's see, no special orders at the window, that's another thing, and then, it's the same kind of a thing, but no, only ready-made items are able to be picked up at the window. Those, realize I'm saying all that several times, I just need to cover that issue really well, it's a, it's a concern. And then, the other thing would be requiring them to submit the three sets of revised plans with those items identified on there, so that I can finalize them, give them a copy back, we keep one in planning, and we give one to the building department.
Could you clarify the parking conditions? It wasn't really clear to me what that was.
Well, I didn't really have any parking conditions, I'm sorry.
So, did I hear something about a six-month?
Oh, a six-month review.
What's the six-month review?
Yeah, what does that mean?
Well, that means that what we would do is go out administratively, I, myself, and, you know, whomever else we have any issues or concerns with, we go out and we'd be looking at it over the next six months. We'd look at it at night, make sure it's not getting too far stacked up, no problems, that they're not putting things in that storage area, not that we don't trust them, it's just prudent approach to follow-up, I think.
But this doesn't hold them up from proceeding?
Oh, not even a second. It's only after, thank you for pointing that out, would only be six-month, thank you, after they receive their certificate of occupancy. So, in other words, they'll operate six months, and we'll let you know how that six months went.
Okay, then I guess my question is, if we're approving a site plan and it shows, what, 11 spaces?
Mm-hmm.
And then, six months later, you come back and you say, maybe that's not enough, or it's too crowded, then what happens?
Well-
I mean, because we've already approved the site plan on 11 spaces, how would we adjust after that?
Well, if, if we find out that the use that's there is, that the lack of parking spaces is causing a problem, that'd be a nuisance to a neighboring business, or the neighborhood, or the streets, and we would potentially, we could potentially revoke their special land use. The idea here is to take, is to take a good look at how they're operating and report back. I mean, I want to do that on a, from a staff perspective, and that's perfectly fine. If the Planning Commission isn't interested in whatever that information is, that's okay. I'm just letting you know that I think it's prudent, and I would want to kind of keep an eye on that, just to make sure that we haven't created a problem. If we have, like I said, if it's, if the problem is, it's a big problem, you know, at the end of the day, we could end up revoking their-
That's what I'm concerned about, but I'm not-
But let me, let me move on. The alternative to that would be potentially finding, it's not a decision that we make administratively, we'd have to have findings and make sure that we have the ability to revoke it. The alternative would be to have the applicant find parking within a certain distance from their location if they didn't have adequate parking on the site.
We may have an additional comment, if I may.
It's up to the Commissions.
Go ahead.
Okay. Currently, the parking situation at this building as it stands with two tenants is a nightmare. It really is.
Be closer to the mic, please.
Sorry, now I used to, the old army in me, I just blew my voice out. Currently, the parking situation with the, with the two tenants is a nightmare. I'm just going to tell you that right now, it's not a very professional word to use, it is. It's bad, okay? But that's generated because of the nail salon, and people like the time that they're standing there. With the addition of the drive-through, we're going to eliminate the need for most of that parking anyways. Our customers, they don't, they don't want to park there. I've got stores that are three times the volume, and they could, they could get by with four parking spots for the whole day. So, with the addition of the drive-through, I think you'll find after the six-month review, that this is going to fit well with you, okay? And then, it's going to give you a plan moving forward for other businesses in my type that you can attract into the area, because you've got a pattern for it.
I know, I mean, from my experience, I think 11 parking spaces is going to be fine, because, you know, basically, people in and out, pick it up, they're gone, you know, five or 10 minutes, and it's never been crowded when I'm-
Well, thanks for coming by, Laura, or Miss Coulter. You know, McDonald's has a much higher need for parking, because people go in and sit, they don't do it at our location.
Yes. But I did want to, if I could, ask Mr. Laddie to comment on whether we have the authority, if we've approved 11, because as far as I know, we haven't done this before, made a condition that, you know, they could, we could come back and potentially, you know-
It's going to be, again, it would be hard to, it would be hard for us to retract our approval of this special land use coupled with the site plan approval, but I think that one of the things we can certainly do is make sure that all the provisions of the site plan are being, are adhered to in the proper space and are functioning the way they're supposed to function. If it turns out that after their administrative review, that there is some problem with, for just, for example, the distance between the dumpster area and the queue, there may be ways for us to amend the site plan slightly, but I think you're right, I think once we approve essentially this layout, we're going to be hard pressed to revoke that, we may have the opportunity to amend it in some way and try to mitigate whatever problems exist. And I am, I think, particularly with what the applicant just said, I think an administrative review is going to be important for us for, not only just for this case, but for other cases moving forward, because this could be a really helpful way to alleviate our parking issues.
I like the idea of administrative review, because, you know, it makes sense, you know, come back six months and see. Working in that will, you know, also help us in the future with other, you know, it was just my concern about, you know, whether we have the authority really to- It was just my concern about, you know, whether we have the authority really to...
It could be a little aggressive.
Revoke that portion of the plan.
I like your spirit.
We would work with you guys, by all means, if six months comes and there's no concerns.
Mr. Mansur first.
I'm sitting on, please.
Mr. Roberts?
Okay, just to, I'm sure this is a rhetorical question on my part, but we're confident that we've got sufficient space for both the drive-through lane and for, if someone wanted to circle the building to go out, they would be able to get past the, past the garbage receptacle and its, and its enclosure, and be able to get around the respective cars, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. See that, yeah, you've got, there's, that footprint is for the pad and the...
Yeah.
So, okay, all right, very good. I just want to confirm what I presume to be already the case.
All the aisle widths meet the minimum code requirements for, for dimensional...
Very good. I'd like to make a motion to approve the special land use.
Okay.
Number 20-003, with the stipulations, the conditions that Director Lloyd has mentioned, and the six-month administrative review included.
Okay, wait a second.
Mr. Gillis.
Mr. Gillis, second.
Mr. Johnson. Okay, all those.
You want to add the final approval of the site plan to that?
Do we have, I was thinking about that, but do we have to separate them, or do both?
Do them both, if you want.
So I'll amend my motion to include approval of site plan review numbers 1066.
And, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Any comments, any further comments? With that, we'll take a vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or oppose.
You know how much work this was.
Nay. Okay, 7, 4, 0.
But it was fun.
Nays and two absents. Okay, with that, committee, thank you. You're welcome to stay, but thank you.
Okay.
Committee reports. Mr. Mansur?
Nothing from the township.
Okay, Mark, any further?
No, I think the master plan stuff was good, but I'll add to the next one. You don't mind, I'll, with the zoning board of appeals, we do have an item coming up. It's actually over on the McLaren headquarters site off the, off the freeway there, there's a large billboard that sits on the MDOT right-of-way, and MDOT is looking to remove all those billboards from their rights-of-way, and this is one of them that they're looking at moving, and lo and behold, McLaren would like to have it moved onto their property. And of course, that constitutes quite a big monument sign, if you will, and so, we're, they've, they've asked to have it, and I had to deny it, because we don't have provisions that allow for a sign that large, and so they've appealed that, and they're looking to get a variance, and that'll be coming up at the next zoning board of appeals meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And will there be information on that before that meeting?
Sure, a public hearing notice, and staff report will be prepared, yeah.
You bet. Okay, Mr. Brown is not here, he recently came out of the hospital. So, but you don't have any thoughts or comments on the, what Mr. Brown would report on, any ideas, Mark?
Um, no.
Okay. Well, that was the sign, I guess you just talked about, sorry. Okay, Mr. Gillings isn't here, but the site plan review, we had that reviewed this, earlier before this meeting, with the Little Caesars proposal, and we provided that feedback, and that's the only site plan we've had since the last meeting, so. With that, that completes the agenda. Are there any other comments anyone would like to make? With that, I would make the motion as secretary to adjourn the meeting. Spark?
Stand up, people.
All in favor?
Aye.
Seven, fours, zero again. Thank you very much.
Sure.